Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 7:55 PM. Welcome to tonight's Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of Monday, August 4th, 2025. Members of the Planning and Zoning Commission in public may participate in the public hearing. All participants will be able to speak when called upon. At this time, I would like to explain the procedures to be followed during the meeting. The Commission has both a consent agenda and an agenda for consideration of individual items. Items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and non-contested. Item number one, Citizen Comments, provides the opportunity for members of the public to address the Commission on items that are listed on the consent agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, and the Secretary will let you know when one minute is left. For all Platts and plans conditionally approved or disapproved by the Commission, the applicant will be provided a written statement of the conditions for the conditional approval or the reasons for disapproval. These conditions and reasons are not arbitrary. They are directly related to the requirements of Local Government Code Chapter 212 and include citations to the law that is the basis for the conditional approval or disapproval. For individual consideration items, I will call the applicant or his or her representative to present the case. The applicant will have up to five minutes to present the case, which includes all persons representing the application. Then those wishing to speak in favor and those wishing to speak in opposition will have up to five minutes each to present his or her comments. Prior to speaking, please give your name and city of residence. Remember to speak directly into the microphone as this hearing is recorded for the public record. Any handouts you wish to provide should be given to staff. Please do not approach the Commission. The next meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission will be Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025. The next item on our agenda is Citizen Comments on items listed on the consent agenda. April, has anyone signed up to speak on any item on the consent agenda?
No one signed up. Please proceed.
All right. Secretary Merrick, would you please read the consent agenda into the record?
Yes, I have three...
Four?
Four items to read into the consent agenda.
For approval?
For approval. Approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes of Monday, July 7th and Monday, July 14th. The second one is 2025-171-P-L. Eschar Replat, which is located at 16 West Rochelle Drive, Rochelle Road, excuse me. The next one is 2025-200-P-L Delaware Phase 3, which is located at 500 West 6th Street, 721 and 722, Righty Street, 712, 718, and 802 Hilltop Drive. The last one for approval is 2025-233-P-L Los Colinas Sector 11, 6th Installment, located at 111 Customer Way.
All right. We have four items on the consent agenda for approval. Do I have a motion to approve these four items?
I'll make a motion to approve the four items.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Omerk and a second from Commissioner Ahmed. All right, and the motion passed unanimously. All right, on to the items for consent agenda disapproval.
Yes, I have three items for disapproval. The first one is 2025-231-P-L Story Village Edition Revised, located at 2305 West Airport Freeway. The next one is 2025-234-P-L FedEx Freight Irving, located at 3100 South Beltline Road. Finally, 2025-237-P-L Lone Stallion Edition, located at 1629 Verone Road.
All right, do I have a motion for disapproval on the basis set forth in the staff memos?
I'll make a motion for disapproval.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for disapproval. Please vote. And the motion passed unanimously. All right, on to item number nine, Special Fence Plan 2024-411-SFP. Is the, this is located at 806 South Loop 12? Oh, this is the one that's being postponed. Do we need to have a hearing on this? We do. Okay. That's it. All right, this one, this is case is being postponed. We aren't able to hear it, make a decision on it tonight, but we'll go ahead and have a public hearing since it was posted in case anybody had any comments and wanted to speak in favor or in opposition to this item. At this time, is there anybody who would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this item? All right, it will be re-noticed for, as I mentioned, the September 2nd to 2025 meeting, so it'll be heard then formally. All right, item number 10, zoning case 2025-91-ZC. I don't think we can vote on it, can we? We can't vote. We can't vote on it, can we?
Um, no, I guess not. I mean, you can't. It doesn't hurt anything if you postpone it, but you can't make a recommendation on it.
Yeah, but we can't. We can't. It was, it was my understanding we can't vote on this because it wasn't properly noticed. Or is we could vote to postpone? We can vote to postpone. All right, I stand corrected. All right, do I have a motion to postpone?
I'll make a motion to postpone 2024-411-SFP.
All right, and that's to September 2nd, 2025?
Yes.
All right.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And the motion passed unanimously. All right, now we're on to 2025-91-ZC, located at 323 Collins Drive. Is the applicant present? I didn't see, is the applicant present? Are you the applicant?
I'm sorry.
Oh. Okay. Would you like to come up to the front and say anything? Okay, no? All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this item? No? Then I will return it to the Commission.
If there's no further discussion, I'd like to move case number, zoning case number 2025-91-ZC to City Council for disapproval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second recommending disapproval. All right, and the motion passed unanimously. Now, it still goes to the City Council at the City Council meeting on, on August 28th, and at that point, the City Council will decide whether, whether or not to approve the request or not. We're just giving a recommendation. I believe the staff report said that there was a recommendation of disapproval because there aren't currently guidelines upon which to grant approval, but that means that it's up to the discretion of the City Council, so they, they would be the ones to talk to at that meeting to, to request them to approve it. All right, on to item number 11, zoning case 2025-115-ZC, located at 908 Sunset Drive. Is the applicant present? Sir, would you like to come up and speak? Okay, can you come up to the front, to the microphone? And if you could state your name and address for the record?
Can you please turn the microphone on just right?
Should be, yeah, down there.
My name is Brian Garcia. This is my father, the owner, Erastor Garcia, and the address is 908 Sunset Drive Irving, Texas, 75061. Nice to meet y'all.
Thank you. All right. Was there anything further you wanted to say?
We started to make it as a storage at first. And after we made it for a storage, we later decided to make it into a rental unit, a rental unit.
No, for a living.
What is it?
For a living, nosotros.
So we could live in it, a rental unit, so we can live in it, like a living unit. And we put a kitchen, a restroom, and a closet, and... And it's something small, 300 and something feet. That should be all.
Okay. Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant?
Was your father aware that he needed a permit to build that?
Um, he didn't know.
And when was it built?
It was constructed in 2021. But as a storage at first. And the department for like a living unit has barely had about six months.
Commissioner Ahmed?
Currently, is it being used to live in it or are you using it as an office space? What's the current use?
We're currently using it for office work, but it is occupied right now, like there's nobody living there at the moment.
So when you had it as a storage unit, did you have bathroom and kitchen in there at that time?
Yes. No, no.
So you just built the bathroom and kitchen right now, six months ago?
Six months ago.
Okay. What was the intent, like why did you want to build bathroom and kitchen if you were going to use it as a office?
We just wanted to use it as a, like an office, like just in case, you know, having a little facility, use a restroom there and everything.
Does anybody live there?
Not, not at the moment, no.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? No? Thank you very much. All right. Is there anybody who would like to speak in favor of this item? Anybody in opposition? Well, then I'll turn it to the Commission.
If there are no further discussions, I'd like to move zoning case 2025-115-ZC recommend to the Council for disapproval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second recommending disapproval. Please vote. For disapproval, right? All right, and the motion passes unanimously. And so as I mentioned before, this just means it goes to the City Council. Currently, we don't have any guidelines upon which to, to grant or to recommend approval, and so, but the City Council does have the ability to do that, but that's up to their discretion. So the, the City Council meeting on August 28th will be when, when your item will be heard by the City Council. Thank you. All right, zoning case 2025-137-ZC, located at 1405 Lake Shore Drive. Is the applicant present? Sir, ma'am, would you like to speak? Your name and address?
Name is Ronaldo Abetin. Address is 1405 Lake Shore. I am the applicant. My mom over there is Fay. She is actually the owner of the house. So a little backstory, my parents bought this house over 30 years ago, and they've lived in it ever since. Unfortunately, my dad passed away about a year and a half ago, but my mom wanted to continue living here, so myself, my wife, and my daughter, we moved in with her to keep her company and help out around the house. However, one of the stipulations was that she wanted to kind of have her own separate and independent space in the house. And also the fact that, you know, all the bedrooms in the house are on the second floor, and you know, my mom has some, you know, she already had surgery on her knee, so mobility, she's having mobility issues. So we came up with a plan to kind of build and attach, you can call it a tiny home, I call it a casita in the back of the house that's closer to the lake, where she can basically, you know, kind of be on her own if she wanted to, close the door, you know, so not to be disturbed. So we contracted out with a builder last year. We kind of designed a 500 square foot addition. It contains a bedroom, a bathroom, and a kitchen area, which can, would consist of a refrigerator, a sink, a range hood, and a two burner cooktop. No dish, no garbage disposal, no dishwasher, no built-in oven. So, you know, the builder, we all designed this, and the builder submitted the plans for a permit, but the inspection department rejected it because they said that a range hood, a range vent, and a cooktop would constitute a second kitchen in a single-family residence. That's a no-go. So we wanted to continue building this addition, so we decided to just yank out the range hood and the cooktop. So, and then we submitted it to the city, and it got approved. So we did break, you know, started construction last year, last June, and this past June, it was completed, and my mom actually moved into the addition. Doesn't have a range hood or a cooktop yet, so the kitchen's really non-functional at this point, so, you know, the reason we're here tonight is to see if we could get an approval to get that range hood and cooktop in. Any questions for me?
Any commissioners have questions for the applicant? Commissioner Ahmed?
Are there any hardships right now why you wouldn't need a kitchen, second kitchen on the same floor?
Um, well, I think it's just because my mom wants to, you know, do her own cooking. Right now, you know, my, you know, my wife and my mom shares the kitchen, so it's not a, two different cooking styles, so it's not a very sustainable arrangement at this point.
Some would consider that a hardship.
Yes, yes.
So had you looked into like, you know, like you can do hot plates and different things opposed to...
Yeah, so, so when we, when the cooktop was rejected, so, you know, we already had, like, we were planning on having like a countertop microwave in there. She has an air fryer as well, she has an electric skillet. I think we could still continue using that, you know, for cooktops. You know, we talked about even getting like some of those portable cooktops that she could use too, but, you know, if she is cooking in there though, there's no ventilation, we should have to open up a window, so we kind of do like to have, at the very least, a range hood in there to help vent out in case she wants to, you know, cook something, like grill something, like on the air fryer especially.
So are you saying you'd like to have just the vent hood and not the range? I know you'd like to have both.
I like to have both. If, if I need, if I have to pick one, yes, the, well, I don't know if my mom prefers one or the other, but I would probably prefer the range hood right now because there are other options besides the cooktop that we can use.
So your main concern, going back to what she said, is, is that if we don't allow you to have the second cooktop, you do want ventilation in there, which I can understand, but you can do an alternative ventilation from, they sell different variety of ventilation. You don't necessarily got to go a, you know, a vent hood. You, you could use a different variety of ventilation in there to take out the smell or whatever that's in there.
That's true, but the location of the kitchen right now, I don't know if, well, I think in your working session, you pulled up the plan there, but the, the window is in the bedroom portion of it, and there's a wall, there's pretty much a wall separating the bedroom and the kitchen, so even if we open up a, even up, even if we open up the window and added like a fan...
Well, you could do it through the roof ventilation, tube, vent.
Sorry?
It's time for sleeping.
Uh, what I was thinking is more along the lines of a roof ventilation?
Well, that would be the range hood.
Ventiler on top of the roof with a pipe that comes down to?
That would be the range hood then. So the, they, we did.
Not necessarily.
Well, we did plan, well, the vent, so during construction, we, we did add a vent to the top, but it's now kind, it's unused right now, but the idea was to connect the range hood to that.
Well, my concern with this is, is that it's not necessarily what you're using it for, or what you want to use it for. It's ten years down the road when the house sells. Like you said, you basically built another little house, tiny house, to the back of it. And the way it's designed and laid out, it could be turned into a rental. And that's, that's my concern without having the vent hood and the second range.
Uh, the, all the utilities are connected to the, to the main house. There's no separate utility, so no separate meter. And, um, this was my, this is my parents' forever home. And it will continue to be for my mom.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this item? Anybody in opposition? Then I'll return it to the commission for discussion and a motion. Commissioner Denny?
Well, I would just like to make, to make a comment. I know we, uh, at least in the past, have had concerns about ADU. This is, this is adjacent to our ADU discussions and density. I, I think, I think it's, I find it significant that the, this unit within the house does, is connected to the whole house. You know, like, for example, the utility is also the doorway. It's, it's not just, um, uh, it's not separate from the west, rest of the living, living unit. So, uh, I, I can support this, so I just want to voice that.
I agree with Commissioner Denny. Uh, anybody else?
No other comments? I'd like to move zoning case two zero two five dash one three seven dash Z C. Be forwarded to city council with recommendation to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second recommending approval. Please vote. And the motion passes, five to three. All right. Now, that does still go to council, so it does go with a recommendation of approval, but it's still ultimately up to council to decide how they want to handle it. All right. On to item number thirteen, development plan, two zero two five dash two oh five dash D V P. Located at one oh one Cimarron Trail. Is the applicant present?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, would you like to come up to the podium? And this is for final action by P and Z.
Hello, thank you all. Um, I'm Jason West. I'm here on behalf of Camden Property Trust for one oh one Cimarron Trail, Irving, Texas, seven five zero six three. Uh, we just submitted a change to the development plan with a development overlay for the planned unit development, uh, for a variance to the parking request. Um, based on the current requirements for the city of Irving, we would only need four hundred and eighty-three parking spaces between the one-bedroom and two-bedroom split. After this variance request of the three parking spaces, we will still have, um, well over that amount at five hundred and seventy-two. Um, and as noted earlier, there is a structure that was already, not a structure, but a, a small concrete ramp that was built into a permitted, um, maintenance building that was added to the community. And that's really it. Answer any questions if you'll have any?
My understanding is you received a permit from the city to build that structure?
Uh, yes, sir. That's correct.
Do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant?
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this item? Oh, did you have a question for the applicant?
No.
Anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this item? Anybody in opposition? Then I'll return it to the commission for any discussion and a motion. And this, this is a motion for final action.
If there's no, um, further questions, I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Yeah, sorry.
Of development plan two zero two five dash two zero five dash V P.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the item. Please vote. And the motion passes unanimously.
Mr. West, I want to thank you. I live in that area, and I really appreciate the improvements you all have done with some of the landscaping. The new lighting about a year ago makes a really tremendous difference. It's very nice to see upkeep of a, of a nice apartment complex.
Thank you. All right. Zoning case two zero two five dash two zero eight dash Z C. Located at two oh one East Pioneer Drive. Is the applicant present? Ma'am? Would you like to come up? No? Okay. All right. Um, is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this item? Anybody in opposition? Ma'am? I think it got turned off.
Good evening, my name is Kimberly Chestnut, and I live at six eighteen North Delaware Street. And I'm within the two hundred-foot radius. I sent a two-page letter to you all, so hopefully you've had a chance to review my, my input. What is not in that letter is within this radius, a large percentages of the homes are actually rented, so the owners don't even live in the neighborhood. I own my home and I live in the neighborhood, so I would be impacted by that. Additionally, if you drive up-down East Pioneer, between North O'Connor and Britton, how many more auto repair shops do we need? How many, anything to do with auto do we need? Even if you go up and down Britton, past, you know, Pioneer on both sides, there's a number of something to do with, with autos. Car shops and things like that. And we are a two-block. The city just invested millions of dollars in making better streets for us and everything. And this area is already saturated. We don't need another one. We just, we want to enjoy the community that we have, and that is why I'm opposing, you know, this. We just don't need another one.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Was there somebody else who wanted to speak in opposition? Sir?
My name is Roman Alvarez. Um, we own the house next to hers. We are sixteen, six, six one six North Delaware. Uh, we also oppose the change, um, due to the noise, the, um, the increased noise that will be coming due to this new, um, business that they're wanting to open. Unfortunately, we know that most mechanic shops, as, as much as they have set hours, some of the, the work always goes over the time. So as much as they'll try to be working within those hours, we'll still have a increase of noise. It, it just, I, I'm not really, we grew up, I grew up there all my life. I liked the quietness. It was a small, little area before they opened it up to the next, um, street. And so it's kind of removing the homey vibe they had and going more into commercial. And I'm not really approving for it. We might not live there anymore, but we still own the property and we still have interest, so that's why we came this afternoon. And so that's our opinion.
Thank you. Was there anybody else who wanted to speak in opposition to this item? No? With the applicant, would you like to respond to any of the comments that have been made? No? All right. Then I will close the public hearing and return it to the commission for any discussion and a motion.
Yeah, I'm concerned that, that building or that lot is probably not adequate enough to hold a repair shop. At most, it can probably have one bay, and if demand increases by more than just one car, it'll overflow into the parking lot and onto the street. Um, it will not only be disruptive to the homeowners, but it'll be unsightly as well. So, um, I'm not in favor of this, uh, item.
Any other comments or motion?
If none of the commissioners have any, uh, comments, I'd like to make a motion. Zoning case two oh two five, two oh eight Z Z. Uh, be forwarded to city council for disapproval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second recommending disapproval. Please vote. And the motion passes unanimously. All right. Zoning case two zero two five dash two oh nine dash Z C. Located at twenty-three twenty-three Cheyenne Street, also known as twenty-four twenty-nine Esters Road. Is the applicant present? Sorry.
Good evening. Um, excuse me. My name is Bob Greenfield. I'm the president of the Conference for the Society of St. Vincent de Paul at Holy Family Catholic Church. I reside at sixteen twenty-seven Sunnybrook Drive in Irving for the last forty years. I'm not sure how to do this. Oh, here we go. Who we are. Excuse me. Um, St. Vincent de Paul is a Catholic organization. It's a charitable organization, was, was founded in eighteen thirty-three in Paris, France. It's one of the largest charitable organizations in the world. Um, it's in a hundred and fifty countries, has eight hundred thousand members, and a hundred, one, one point five million volunteers. In the U.S., there are ninety thousand Vincentians, that's what we call ourselves. Uh, four thousand conferences, which is the parish-based organization. And last year, we served five million people in the United States, and we shared one point seven billion dollars. What we do for the community, this is kind of our slogan. When our neighbors and friends in the community fall on hard times, we help regardless of income, color, creed, or circumstances. We have two main ministries at Holy Family. We have a financial assistance outreach. For the last two years, we've done two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to help the poor in our community. We also have a pantry, a food ministry. We deliver food. People call our helpline, and we have teams of delivery people, and we go to them. We don't make them come to us. We also have a monthly food truck, and we average about two thousand pounds a month when, when we have the food truck. We have fifty or sixty cars line up every Saturday for that. Our food partners include Catholic Charities of Dallas, North Texas Food Bank, a local Kroger, where more volunteers pick up donated food, as well as a Banera Bread and MacArthur, where we get donations as well. Last couple of years, we've averaged about nine thousand hours of service every year. Why we're here tonight? Our pantry needs a, a permanent home. We started at one location on our campus, and we had to move to three other locations because that facility was needed for something else. Um, we have two operating locations and one storage area, it's a garage. And we would like just to have one building to use for the pantry. Our goal is, when we started thinking about this about a year ago, we were not going to divert any funds that were donated to us for the poor to build a building. We were just going to continue what we're doing for the poor and find, find grants and major donors. We, and the other thing was, we wanted to go outside of our local community to find the funding. We didn't want to go to the same people and ask for more money. And we have achieved our goals. We've raised about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, seventy percent of which came from outside the community. What we want to do is build a thirty-by-fifty steel building in our parking lot. We have adequate parking, um, that's not going to be a problem. And we won't impact the traffic through the neighborhood because we deliver. We don't ask people to come to us, so it, it won't be a problem with that. There is a setback on the property line of twenty-five feet, and we're requesting that we get a variance to, from that to ten feet because it just makes sense. Um, it's just a better use of the, of the, of the land, of the property. Um, and on those property lines, on the other side of it, are parking lots. This is our campus.
You have one minute remaining, sir.
Okay. This is our campus. You may be familiar with it. I won't go into details. You'll see, our buildings are kind of in the center and parking lots around. This is where we're proposing to build a building. Um, on the right, you see, um, a parking lot for budget rental, rental trucks. And below that is the parking lot for Look into N. So we're not, uh, creating a hardship for any neigh, residential neighbors that may have a swimming pool or backyard or whatever. And I just wanted to thank you guys for your community service. We're a community service organization as well, and we appreciate, um, any, anybody else that does community service. So thank you. Any questions?
Do the commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Ahmed?
I just wanted to say, sir, I'm very intrigued by the work you guys are doing.
Oh, thank you.
It, uh, takes a very genuine heart to remove the layers and disturb humanity. So thank you for doing, for what you guys are doing.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this item? Sir?
Good evening, Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Steve Allen, and I live at fifteen thirty-three Alden Street here in Irving. I've lived here for about ten years. And most of that time, I have worked specifically providing housing solutions for the homeless in our community. I was also pastor for about five years at Christ Church Irving. Um, in approximately twenty nineteen, I began to be a part of the Irving Community Action Network, or ICAN. It was during that time that I first became connected with what I consider and still consider one of the best-kept secrets in Irving, the nonprofit organization St. Vincent de Paul. Since twenty nineteen, I have been a part of housing hundreds of homeless individuals specifically from the city. St. Vincent de Paul has been a constant vital partner during that time. Over the past couple of years, as we have housed, um, those individuals and families, their services have become invaluable. One example is ninety-five percent of those that we have housed, St. Vincent de Paul has provided new beds and mattresses for each member of their household. Beyond just the comfort of sleeping in a real bed on their first night off the street, these new beds make a bigger difference in their lives. Prior to twenty seventeen, I was employed by the City of Arlington Code Compliance Division and served as supervisor of multifamily housing program. During that time, one of the things I witnessed was a number of individuals from lower-income backgrounds who would move in without beds to sleep in. Many of them would find mattresses or beds on the streets that looked to be okay and bring them to their apartments. Later, they were discovered that they were infested with bedbugs. That became such an issue in Arlington that now that I work to house the homeless, we're committed to keeping that from happening here. Through their thrift store on Northwest Highway, St. Vincent de Paul has been instrumental in helping us make that happen. It may not sound like much, but for people who many times have nothing, a good, safe, clean bed is a treasure. Beyond helping with beds, I can tell you how many times their food pantry services have contributed to the work that we do by helping our new tenants with food. They go the extra mile to the extent that sometimes, when we put someone in a hotel prior to moving into an apartment, St. Vincent de Paul will deliver groceries to these families, ensuring that they have food many times within just a few hours' notice. I could go on, but I won't. Just to understand that St. Vincent de Paul, even if you've never heard of them, is a huge part of what makes Irving great, by helping those folks that need it most. These men and women are the good guys. Anything that we can do as a city to assist them in expanding their operations to help our city, we should. I ask for you as city leaders to partner with them in the work that they do in helping those people in, in need by allowing St. Vincent de Paul to build the, uh, under the variance they have requested. to build under the variance they have requested. Please approve their zoning request. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wanted to speak in favor of this item? Yes. Mr. Zeskey?
Good evening. I am Mark Zeskey, and I live at two four zero five Salmon Street, which is twenty-eight, number twenty-eight on your map, your property map that you gave out for this. And so I'm part of the affected area. And I will admit that literally every night, my wife and I walk the perimeter of Holy Family. So I'm very, very familiar with it. Besides having gone to fourth grade at Holy Family in nineteen sixty-seven and sixty-eight and having my P.E. teacher, who just got back from Vietnam, march us in P.E. class right in that particular parking place. So I've been walking it and very familiar with it forever. And I would tell you that I won't go into the good work these guys do because Steve Allen did a great job with it, and I don't want to take up your time because I've been in your shoes before. But it's just at a place where it really won't impact anybody. There's just no negative, there's no downside to it. And you talked about the setback. Well, it's a weird place in the corner of the building where there's already double fences there, and it's impossible even to get through or around. So it just doesn't make any sense. You'd be basically just adding another fifteen feet of empty space. So it doesn't make any sense. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this item? Anybody who'd like to speak in opposition to this item? Then I'll return it to the commission for any discussion and a motion.
If no further discussion, I'd like to make a recommendation for zoning case two zero two five, two zero nine ZC for recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second recommending approval. Please vote. And the motion passes unanimously. All right. Zoning case two oh twenty-five dash two ten dash ZC located at thirty-one thirty-one North O'Connor Road. Is the applicant present? Sir? Would you like to speak?
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairperson, all board members, and all the presidents. My name is Raj Sethi. I'm residing at seventeen oh six Lexington Avenue in Allen, Texas. Previously, we submitted the application for zoning that same lot to townhome zoning. Neighborhoods had a concern and some other negative concerns. We definitely changed our plan to R six, so we put in the new application. And which is minimum square foot, of course, is six thousand feet. When we were in the, your work session area, and we heard that the concerns about the, the original, what you see is the application is about five thousand square feet. We are definitely, I heard the concerns, which is, makes sense, and we're willing to change to six thousand feet, which is minimum for the R six. And also, the definitely, we need one variance on that one. Instead of the, minimum is, as per R six is a hundred feet. We need ninety-eight feet minimum in order to meet the right-of-way for the road width. That's part of City of Irving requirement, just because of that. And that's it, I will say, and thank you very much for everything. So I request you to please recommend the...
The variance on the two feet?
Variance and the approval for that one to the council, yes. Yep. Thank you very much, Sid.
Do any commissioners have questions for the applicant?
I have a question. So you're willing to go to six thousand square feet on all the lots, correct?
Correct.
And you just need a variance of the two feet because of the width of the road and the turnaround and all that stuff?
That's correct. That's correct. Only two feet, the depth of the lot.
So basically...
Yeah, not the width, the depth, yeah.
Yeah, the depth of the lot, excuse me. So basically, if you're willing to go to an R six zoning, the only thing you need is just that two-foot variance from us, correct?
Correct, correct. And that's what I, one more thing, I'm sorry, I'm going to add anyway. So the neighborhood already, we comply, but that's why we withdraw the townhome one, and we see that R six. So we're going to go with the same places, left, right, all residential R six. I'm sorry, go ahead, sir. Any more questions?
Mr. Sethi, I have a couple of questions. So what, with the six thousand square feet, what will the width of that...
That will be... See, to make it, say, ninety-eight, it could be about sixty-one point five, but the minimum is, needs fifty. But required fifty, but to make it six thousand, which is still will be above the guideline. We are not going to change anything up what's R six required, except that variance, two feet. Rest the setbacks at the front, left, right, and everything will be...
And the house will be built in the center of the lot? So you'd have a side yard on either side of the house?
Correct.
Opposed to a zero lot line where...
No, no, not zero lot line. That's what I'm saying, we're going to comply as per R six. That won't be zero lot line, no.
A very narrow side yard on both sides.
I'm sorry?
It will be a very narrow side yard on both sides.
I am not sure, honestly. It's fifteen feet or ten feet on the side, fifteen feet on each building. So I think that makes thirty. But honestly, I'm not going to say any wrong numbers. But definitely, we'll still comply with R six, but it won't be zero lot line.
And will these be two-story, one-story?
No, we haven't planned anything yet. That's what, when you had all discussion, we were thinking five thousand. The only thing we're concerned with, the way the issue was coming up, and definitely, me and Mr. Glenn sat out there, and we discussed it.
I think the commissioner was asking, are you planning on building two-story homes or one-story homes?
At, right now?
Yeah.
No, we didn't plan anything. The five thousand plan was, according to the neighborhood, so two-story homes, no. The front one, yes, maybe, but not the back one. So it depends out there. But that's what I'm saying, we didn't plan anything yet. The only thing was zoning townhouse when we were planning before. Definitely, the intentions were, what, two-story.
So you're going to...
Not at this time.
You're going to take in consideration then backing up to the neighbors' yards and stuff like that, as far as the heights and stuff, correct?
That's correct. Yep. So that's why, last time they had a concern, that were on townhomes.
Commissioner Denny?
So what's the maximum number of lots that this would then result in?
I think that will be either eleven or twelve, as per R six. Previously, when we requested five thousand, and there was fourteen lots coming up.
But it would be whatever R six allows?
Exactly, hundred percent. Only one variance, as I requested. Ninety-eight feet minimum. Other than that, definitely. If whatever comes, if it comes eleven along to that, as per R six, we'll comply with that hundred percent.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
Are you, excuse me?
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The school building, are you going to demolish that?
Yes, sir. Uh-huh.
Okay. So that will all be demolished, then?
Yes.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this item? Anybody in opposition? No? Then I'll return it to the commission for any discussion and a motion. Oh, sorry. Yes, ma'am. Can you come down to the microphone and give us your name and address first?
Maricela Rivera, five oh four Moral Drive. I'm just on the other side of the fence. So my question is, to me, I don't know too much about this, but just to make it shorter, to me is same book, just a different title. You know what I mean? So he doesn't know whether they're going to be two-story houses, right? He doesn't know yet.
Yeah. I mean, he said it would be the same, he's proposing the same zoning as the houses in your neighborhood.
But will it be like one story or two?
I think the zoning for that neighborhood correctly, allows for two-story, but it's, in your neighborhood, it's the same thing. They're probably, they're mostly one-story, but they can be two-story.
Okay. And how are the houses going to be built around? It's going to be like in the center or how, like...
So I think he intended a one street, long street with a little circle at the end. And then, so houses along the north side and houses along the south side is the drawing that we received.
Okay.
So...
Okay.
Yeah.
All righty. Thank you.
I think it's important to note that he's gone from twenty-four, twenty-three homes down to potentially ten to twelve.
Yeah. And is requesting for the same zoning, residential zoning, that is the same as the neighborhood, both north and south of the property? Was there anybody else who wanted to speak in opposition to this item? Okay. Sir, did you want to respond to anything that was just said? No? Okay. All right. Then I'll close the public hearing and bring it to the commission for any discussion and a motion. Commissioner Denny?
I have a question. Perhaps staff can help. Can you confirm that this two-foot variance is driven by the traffic requirements, the street requirements?
Cody, do you want to...
Well, I can speak to what's required as far as the right-of-way in the street. So for the minimum street right-of-way is fifty-two foot in width and a thirty-one foot back-to-back concrete street. I'm not sure on the overall dimension of the lot, but take that minus fifty-two, then divide that in half. So if that, without looking up the actual dimensions, I just know it's fifty-two foot that's required for right-of-way.
Thanks. All right. Any other comments?
If there's no further discussion by the commission, I'd like to move zoning case two oh twenty-five dash two ten dash ZC to city council for approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second recommending approval. Please vote. And this, just to clarify, this is a motion based on...
It is a motion based on going back to R six. The only thing we're allowing is a two-foot variance for the depth of the lot.
I'll second.
And Commissioner Ahmed said a second on that. All right. Just to clarify. All right. Please vote. And the motion passes seven to one. All right. Zoning case two oh twenty-five dash two eleven dash ZC located at twelve thirty East Airport Freeway. Is the applicant present?
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Jim Dewey with J D J R Engineers here in Irving, Texas, twenty-five hundred Texas Drive, Suite one hundred. I'm going to quickly hand out... There currently is a small C store with fuel cells at this location. It was built in nineteen seventy-eight. The current owner has owned it since two thousand and ten. He wants to improve the property. He wants to start over, tear out everything, and put in a much nicer building, larger with a quick-serve restaurant and six fuel pumps. His use is allowed. The only reason we're here is to see if you can agree to a reduction in the landscape setbacks. We're not asking in a reduction in any plant materials. We're going to plant all the required materials and maybe extra. But you can tell by the size of this property, it's just very small and limited. We're starting over, so I can't stand here and say we have a hardship, a hardship. If we, we can put the thirty-foot landscape buffer in, but it greatly affects his business. He currently has five pumps. We're asking for six. He actually has room for six pumps, but for some reason, there's only one in one of the rows and two in the other two rows. So we're asking basically for the same business, a much nicer, newer building, and we feel like we're trying to meet the spirit of the landscape ordinance. There's been a few variances over the years to the thirty-foot setback. One I remember, because I was involved in it, is the Indian Motorcycle Shop. It's a nice store. They sell upscale motorcycles. They got a variance to the thirty-foot as well. And a variance on the side setback as well. They were on, I think that was Harvard Street. If you look at the exhibits I just passed out, now we're only looking at the buffer zones. The buffer zone is shown in the red line, what is required to be currently the required landscape setback. Now driveways can cross that, but other drives and parking is not supposed to. That's currently, in the buffers, what he has landscaped now. There's no landscape materials, okay? If you turn to what we're proposing, you can see there's nineteen hundred square feet of landscaping. The second sheet is what we're proposing. It over-doubles the landscaped area, but you can see, especially along the one eighty-three side, if we were to have to conform to that, he's gone to lose pumps. And it just makes the business not as viable. That can be done if you think that's in the best interest of the city and the other citizens of the city. I hope you can see that if you were trying to build this business, it would greatly help make the business more viable and be more successful. And like I said, we're not going to try to get out of any landscape materials. We'll put in all the screening shrubs, all the trees. And I want to briefly talk about the Carl roadside. We're asking for a variance there, but I don't really think we have to have a variance. We don't meet the minimum setback, but the landscape ordinance does allow that if you have the average area, the length, you can get closer in some points, which we meet that. We definitely meet that because if you look along Carl Road, we have landscaping past the buffer. So in those areas, the buffer is actually wider, and it makes up for the few feet, looks like about five feet to six feet, that those four parking spaces are into the buffer. So technically, I don't think we need a variance on Carl Road, but I put it in there just so there'd be no question that we do have a section that is into the fifteen feet. But overall, we do meet the average along Carl Road. And that, that is simply it. We're starting with a blank slate. I can't stand here and tell you that we have a hardship and we can't meet it. Of course, you can make us turn this down or recommend denial and to develop this property. He just will have a, won't have the same business he's had. I think it's an improvement, substantial improvement. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you have with this request.
Thank you. Commissioners, have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah. You were talking about moving the pumps over and doing some different scenarios. By moving the pumps, the way you have it laid out now, you actually have it laid out. It looks like you can come in with trailers, trucks, fill up with gas, et cetera. If you start moving the pumps over, that's going to sort of restrict ingress and digress with more heavier top-application trucks and trailers.
Well, on the exhibit that shows the buffer in red with the one that's proposed, you know, if that was the edge of the drive, I don't see how we can not lose three pump islands. Because the distance between the pump islands and the head-in parking along the building is really at the minimum. You know, and you don't, there are a couple C stores in this town. One is over where I live at Pioneer and Esters, that there's just not a room, and all the cars at the pump islands protrude into the driveway. And then parking into the head-in parking along the building becomes very difficult to get in and out. That's not what we want here. This is a convenience store, and we want it to be convenient. And people stop at ones that they can quickly stop, get gas, go in, get a soda or water, and get back on their business. And so we don't, I don't see any possible way of complying with that and not losing the three pump islands and still having it, you know, drivable for most, you know, most passenger vehicles. Our pickups today are large, as you know, and so that's why we're asking for it.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this item? Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this item? Anybody in opposition? Or I'll turn it to the commission for any discussion and a motion.
If there's no further discussion amongst the commissioners, I'd like to move zoning case 2025-211-ZC to city council for approval.
I'll second.
We've got a motion and a second recommending approval. Please vote. And the motion passes unanimously. All right. Comprehensive Plan Amendment 2025-215-CP located at 1420 Greenway Drive, and this has a companion item, zoning case 2025-214-ZC. The applicant wants to come to the front. And are, do you want to address both of them at the same time?
Yeah, Tommy Man, 500 Winstead Building. My plan would be to cover both. If I go slightly over my five minutes...
That's fine.
Maybe. I won't come back up and say it again. I promise. Can I move this forward or do I have to tell you when to move it forward?
You can use the mouse and the keyboard in the drawer.
In the drawer. All right.
Oh, can you say your name again?
Yes, I can. And now I can't go back.
An address, yeah.
Tommy Man, 500 Winstead Building in Dallas. And let me get back to beginning. Okay, so I'm here this evening representing Alliance Industrial Company on this request, which is probably quite familiar to you because you've seen it in a few different iterations. Fundamentally, what they would like to develop is still the same, but let me explain what's changed from, from the last ways you've considered it. First of all, the amount of the site that they'd like to develop. We've dropped from contract on the existing office building. The previous times you'd considered this request, it would have been both the existing office building and this excess parking and lawn area. So part of the concern we had heard was the loss of the office and the potential intensity of our use being incompatible. Well, we've taken the office out and we've chopped the size of the project in half. So now we're just looking to develop one building on the portion of the site. From a zoning and comprehensive plan perspective, this is kind of weird. I mean, this staff acknowledged in the briefing that they're considering an amendment that makes the break right here. But all of this industrial, industrially-zoned land over here has the business office comp plan designation on it today that we have. We chose the freeway district here. It's identified as a potentially appropriate district for the business office classification on the comp plan. And I just want to state for clarity here, we're not, if it's determined that the comp plan amendment is not necessary to allow the freeway zoning here, then we, that's, we don't want to request it. What we want to develop and what the staff report indicates is a flex industrial office project. And so you have kind of a misalignment of concept between just the term warehouse and office. Warehouse can mean a one million square foot building that has thousands of eighteen-wheeler trucks coming in and out every day, right? That is not what would fit on this site. That is not what we want to develop on this site. What we want to develop on this site is a roughly 100,000 square foot building that would have minimal truck traffic, much more likely to have a higher office component for the tenants and more box truck type trips and those things. Alliance has built a very similar project to this in Irving called Freeport One that they can talk a little bit about. So if you think about a use like that fitting on this site and what's around it, to the west, we have an existing smaller flex industrial building and zoning. The existing office building, for reference, that's the seller here. It's vacant. So if we don't close on this piece, both pieces are on the market. I don't know what's gonna happen to that existing office piece. I know the hope would be that a new office tenant takes it over. And we're confident that we can be compatible with that if that's what happens. Proposed, you can see just aesthetically what we're proposing, this type of building doesn't stick out as inappropriate and inconsistent with what's around it. In fact, I think I have one other slide, but if you look, can you go back one? Sorry. If you look across the street to the south at that JVC Kenwood Building, that is an office building that is zoned for office. And it is, you know, a picture's worth a thousand words to illustrate my point. So what we want to develop on the top is technically a warehouse. It looks very similar. It functions very similarly. It might have very similar tenants to the office building that is on the south side of the property. So we're trying to thread that needle. And if anything I'm saying is resonating with you and reticence stems from the fact that this isn't married to a site plan, or you'd like to see standards that ensure what I'm describing is what actually gets developed, we're open to that feedback. We're happy to have that conversation. So I'll conclude with that. And my client is present. I think he signed up, but just for questions unless you want to clean anything up. So thanks.
I have a quick question. You said you were open to that as a, doing a site plan. Did you discuss that with the staff?
So they've tried that once. A previous iteration was in SP two. It was the larger site.
Yeah.
Right? So, I mean, fundamentally, this is what we want to build, and I don't want to, the reason you all aren't comfortable proceeding to be that the request wasn't structured a certain way. Our intent in structuring it this way was to try and choose a district that did not necessitate a comp plan amendment, right, and to reduce the area to be developed to try and address the concerns we'd heard previously. But if you say a straight freeway doesn't make me happy, but if you would come back with an SP one in a couple weeks and put this plan on paper and give me some standards, and then I would feel comfortable, I just would, we would be open to that. That's why I mentioned it.
How long do you think you would, if, if we were to postpone so that you could have that chance?
We have a plan ready, so it wouldn't be difficult for us to produce it. It would probably be a question for Jocelyn and how much time they would need to review and comment on it. But, I mean, you've even, you know, we have a plan so that, we don't need to do a lot of work to produce it.
Are you talking, I mean, we meet about once a month typically?
Yeah.
So one month, two months, three months?
Oh, the shortest time possible, because we have a contractual commitment that we'll have to work through if, if that's, but what I, just to be transparent with you all, I mean, I don't want, we don't, it doesn't do us any good to get postponed a month, just come back and get denied, right? So if that's where you are, we appreciate hearing that. But if you think that difference matters, we'll go to work with the seller and we'll get that plan to Jocelyn and try to pursue it.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
Yes, I have a question. So this warehouse-type structure that you want to build, do you have tenants already?
No. And that's, so these buildings, it's only 100,000 square feet. So it's, these are built without the tenant in hand. The demand for them is insatiable. The one we already built in Irving leased up 100% quickly with two tenants. So banks trust the business plan. Obviously, the developer trusts the success of it, but I can't tell you who the tenant is right now.
And that's my concern too, because driving around Irving, just, you know, all of our requests, I go around to see where they're at. And all, there's several of these type of buildings that got for lease signs on them, and nobody's leasing them. And so I can, I just am concerned that from living here in Irving, we're building all of these structures to be empty. And it's easy, yeah, you can go to the bank and get a loan because it's...
Well, I mean, the one that they just built leased, yeah, 100%, very quickly. I don't know which ones you're talking about. Location matters, obviously.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the applicant? No? Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this item? Anybody in opposition? Then I'll return it to the commission for discussion and a motion.
I got two questions for staff. One question is, if he comes back with a concept plan and we postpone it, is that something that y'all would consider looking at as far as what they've presented now?
Our perspective is fundamentally, office is very different from warehousing or anything that has bay doors, truck circulation, any, any type of wholesale type of use. So those are two very different functions, which is why we went through that future land use exercise a few years ago. So if we did a site plan, I don't know, other than having the confidence of knowing exactly what's gonna be built and where, I don't know if that's going to change the nature of the use.
Okay. The second question I got for you is, based upon the way his lot sits, they're taking away a considerable amount of parking. So when that parking is cut off, how does that affect that office building? Is that office building gonna be, again, short as far as parking?
I asked staff that when we were looking at this case. I understand that this is excess parking for that office.
Mm-hmm.
But yet they couldn't take away any parking that was required for the adjacent office property.
So do we know if that excess parking is part of the requirement for the occupancy?
So if it's excess parking, it wouldn't be required.
Okay.
So required parking, just the minimum, you know, can the office building park itself on its own lot?
Mm-hmm.
It has to be able to stand alone in order to let this go.
And that office building will stand alone as far as parking?
I understand that it can stand alone, but it would have to stand alone.
Okay.
Then I guess we're waiting for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a...
Hold on one minute. Do you want to make any comments based upon what she said as far as you proposing the site plan? You understand what they're saying? It's more fundamental than it is as far as the, what tenant goes in there, exactly what's being built, traffic, et cetera?
Yeah, it's, and it's, it goes a little bit to the difficulty mentioned of not being able to tell you who the tenant is. But these uses already exist in immediate proximity to each other here today, right? There are flex industrial buildings across the street, down the street to the west and to the south here. So we've built in areas like this and coexist with office. The tenants, frankly, it's conceivable that the same tenant takes this building and the vacant office building, because they want to have an office component for a small business that administers the business, and then they want to be, you know, the logistic portion of their business as well. So we think it's potentially complementary. That's a challenge for us in leasing. But we wouldn't be here if, for the same reason, conversely, right, if we thought office was a deterrent to our tenants, we wouldn't look to build a project like this in this area. They can work together.
Commissioner Pritchard?
Yes.
No, he didn't have a question. Go ahead.
None of the other commissioners have any comments? I'd like to make a motion for Comprehensive Plan Amendment 2025-25CP.
215.
215 CP be forwarded to city council based on staff recommendation for denial.
All right, we have a motion recommending denial. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second recommending denial on the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Please vote. And the motion passes unanimously. All right, on to the zoning case 2025-214-ZC, again located at 1420 Greenway Drive. And the applicant, you already spoke. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this item? Anybody in opposition? And I'll return it to the commission for any discussion and a motion.
Mr. Chairman, if none of the other commissioners have any comments, I'd like to make a motion for item 19, zoning case 2025-214-ZC be forwarded to city council based on staff recommendation for denial.
All right, we have a motion recommending denial. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a second. Please vote. And the motion passes unanimously with, with seven votes. All right, on to item number 20, Comprehensive Plan Amendment 2025-218-CP located at 1101 West Royal Lane. This also has a companion case of zoning case 2025-217-ZC. Is the applicant present?
Hello again. I have not moved. Tommy Man, 500 Winstead Building. And again, I'll condense my presentation on both items to one. Our plan on this one has not changed from what you previously saw and recommended approval of. So what I won't do is belabor necessarily some of that. But I do want to clear up a couple things from the work session, and then I want to talk about what's unique at this point and what has changed since the last time you considered it. But just for clarity's sake, the mixed-use project includes the Kirby Ice House concept here, which is separate, but it also includes, these are two-story live-work units. There's actual retail. This fitness facility would be open to the public in the live-work units here. So there is non-residential in the building that has the multifamily, as well as the non-residential component of the Kirby Ice House. And when you look in the rendering, that's the next slide, you can see what we're trying to create along here is the feel of a more retail, walkable street, which is the kind of environment in which non-residential users prefer to locate, right across the street from each other and create that sort of vibrancy and walkability. But that's the plan, and you all have seen it before, so why are we back? Well, first, this is a pretty unique case in a couple ways. You recommended approval previously. Thank you. We're obviously requesting that you do that again this evening. The city council didn't vote on the zoning. They voted no on the comp plan amendment. So they didn't get into the specifics of our actual plan. And in light of what has changed since it was considered, we think it would be good for them to have that opportunity. And our strong preference is to do this collaboratively with the staff, with you, with them, which is a big part of the reason why, why we're here. This case is also a little unique, because we don't actually need a use change. The overlay that we're in allows our use of mixed-use, but it does, and I would venture to guess, the majority of the cases you hear require a change in use, like the one that I just presented to you. So what we don't have, though, are standards for what applies to mixed-use development. So we're going through this zoning process to try and establish those standards. Well, what's changed? Okay, well, our seller, at a micro level, before I address the more obvious thing that's changed, they own the 600,000 square feet of office in three towers across Royal Lane from this site. Since they, we presented to you last, they have heard from a significant tenant that they'll be vacating between 150 and 225,000 square feet of those buildings next year. So they own 1.2 million square feet of office in Los Colinas. They own 16 million square feet of office in the country. They know how to develop office. They know how to manage office. And they are confident that the reason they're losing tenants in these buildings and having troubles is because we don't have the sense of place that is the demand for office in the current day and age. Folks don't just want to drive to the office in the morning and leave in the evening. They want their office to be located in a place where they have entertainment options, dining options, living options, connectivity, walkability, things that are more exciting. That's how you get people to come back from work from home instead of just quitting when you order them to come back from work to home. And they're not just experiencing that theoretically. We're now experiencing it very much acutely in this location with these office buildings across the street. So they've asked us to keep trying. The other obvious thing that's changed is the state legislature has passed a law that is going to go into effect on September 1st called SB 840, which you all know very much about. And it says that a Comprehensive Plan Amendment cannot be required for multifamily to be located on a site like this. And it says multifamily must be allowed, which sounds great. I should probably leave and come back on September the 2nd with some building permits and give you all a very long evening back. But first of all, we don't want to proceed that way. We think this is a good plan. Y'all agreed. We would much rather achieve a more traditional approval, if you will, and bring this project to the market with excitement and support. to the market with excitement and support from our partner in the city. And secondly, there's a lot of uncertainty if we go down that route. Uncertainty for the city and uncertainty for us. You know, the uncertainty for us stems from the fact that we don't know if we can make the multifamily standard you're proposing work. And sort of an ironic thing here is, part of what the city's considering in your SB eight forty response is for mixed-use projects requiring a minimum 35% non-residential component. We know we can't hit that, right? We're a little over ten in what you see here. So, if this is denied and we come back under eight forty, ironically, our only option is to remove the mixed use entirely and try to pursue a multifamily-only option, and we don't know if the new standards will work, and more importantly, maybe we don't know if our seller would even sell it to us for that because it does not achieve what they are hoping to achieve for their existing office holdings across the street. So, from our perspective, that's some significantly undesirable uncertainty for both of us, and that wasn't something that went into your thinking or the city council's thinking a few months ago because we didn't know this law was coming. And so, we think, given that, and for all of these reasons, maybe we can make lemonade out of lemons here and go forward with a plan that we still like, that's real. We have Kirby Ice House, they're ready to go. We think this can be a great project. Not only will it be great for this site, it'll invigorate the existing office. We look forward to working with staff on how to enhance the pedestrian connectivity across the bridge, to get back to the existing retail and hotel options, and really create this more like a truly mixed-use district. There was one little question about traffic. Royal has about 4,600 trips a day. The street of that size can probably carry eight to 10 times that easily, so we're confident there. We can make it work. So, admittedly, this is a different posture and kind of an odd request for you to consider, but I think we would all admit we're in kind of an odd time with respect to land use in cities of over 150,000 people. So, we would be happy to answer any questions or go over any specifics of the project again to the extent that's helpful because I know you have seen it before, but you may not remember every single thing you see because you see a lot. Thanks.
Commissioners have questions for the applicant?
Yeah, so how much retail, what's the percentage of retail you said?
We're a little over 10%.
I think I heard you say you couldn't make.
Yeah, we're, we're a little over 10%, right? And so, the, we, we come out to, I wrote it down. If you include the live-work units, we're at 30,000 square feet of non-residential. If you don't include the live-working units, it goes down to about 21,000 square feet of non-residential uses. So, that's just the retail, fitness, and the Kirby Ice House is 21,000, the live-work adds another 9,000.
So, the Kirby Ice House is really the, like, one of the main restaurant areas, and then around are other retails?
Yeah, we, if I can.
I think that picture you.
So, in this picture, you can actually see it underneath where.
It's not showing.
Well, okay, sorry. Underneath Pearl Landing there, so right underneath it, kind of to the right of Landing and wrapping around is, and you see Bistro, that's actual retail in the ground level of the building going that way. And then if you're looking at Pearl Landing and going to the left, you hit the fitness facility that would be open to the public, and then as you go down to the right out of the picture, you hit the live-work units, and the live-work units also wrap around on Royal. So, if you're walking down, that's a private drive, but it feels like a retail street. You've got Kirby on one side, you've got actual retail and live-work units with transparency and two-story heights on the other, and it creates a pleasant walking experience through the middle of our property.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I do. I asked the question earlier about, not Royal for entrance and exit, but along 161 access road. So, the only entrance and exit will be on Royal. There's no entrance or exit off of the 161 access road.
That's how this is laid out, correct.
Okay.
And honestly, that's one of the challenges for office. Office would want that access.
Yeah.
In a big way.
Especially Kirby Ice House, too.
Well.
I mean, nobody wants to drive around in circles.
Kirby is an interesting phenomenon. I don't know if you've ever been to one of the ones in Houston, but it's very much a destination.
Yeah.
And so, folks, when you're going to a destination, will, they'll drive and make an inconvenient turn or two to get to a place that they really want to get to. Same for people if they're getting home, right? Versus an office and you're trying to lease to tenants and they're going, well, I got people coming from all over and they only got one way in here. This creates a destination where people will put up with more challenging access as opposed to an office building. But the office has other challenges beyond just that, clearly.
Debbie, 161, there is no access road, and there's a pretty significant grade difference there. So, it's impossible to.
Yeah, that's what I remember.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can kind of see it in the east, I guess.
Any other questions for the applicant?
You mentioned the component of, I think, housing and office. What did you mean by that exactly, like?
So, what I was saying is, our seller owns these three office buildings here, which are 600,000 square feet of office. They own this tract. They obviously originally bought it with the idea of expanding office. They haven't been able to make that work, and now they're losing between 150 to 225,000 square feet of tenants out of these buildings next year. To get these leased back up and healthy, they want to create an environment that's not just office, that's got living components for future tenants and their workers, that's got dining, entertainment, shopping, walkability components. I mean, that's what they have experienced as the owners of 16 million square feet of office through a really weird time for office, admittedly. But that was my reference is, so it's, you know, we could have, maybe we should have, made our zoning request include these office buildings so that it nominally was more mixed use, but functionally, that's exactly what we're trying to achieve regardless.
But you mentioned something about the percentage. If it was retail, 10%, and responding to Commissioner April, you mentioned something about if a component was removed, then it was down to 10%, but if you added it, it was like 21 or something like that.
No, that was thousands of square feet. So, these, these live-work units that you see here, those are about.
What do you mean by that, live-work units? What does that mean?
So, you can kind of see a rendering of them here. Let's see, what's my best picture? That's, it's probably here. So, these are two-story high, it's a two-story high floor. So, these units have two stories so that a person can live on the second story, and then there's glazing and a more storefront look down at the ground level. So, a small business owner can run their business, and you get boutique goods, you get people who do custom stuff, whatever, but they can live in their unit and have an open storefront to the public in the ground level of their unit. So, that's why we call them live-work.
I see, I see.
So, when I first, yeah, when I first heard the, the challenge that you presented with the empty units in the office building, I was assuming that these are mostly going to be residential and that would help bring in the lease of the office buildings. How is this helping, having, because whoever's going to live there is going to have his own business there? How is this going to feed into the other?
These, these live-work units are not competing for the same commercial tenant as these buildings. These are going to be leased by a company that takes, hopefully, 200, 225,000 square feet and has several hundred employees, probably the kind of place we all go every day when we're not hanging out here, right? These live-work units are very unique, I mean, micro businesses, right? Just an individual who is trying to cater to a specific custom need or whatever. So, there's no, there's no overlap between these tenancies.
How is it helping your other challenge, though, is what I'm struggling with?
I think this might be, which portion, can you show them which portions are just strictly residential?
Oh.
That are residences here?
Yeah, so this is, I was just talking about the ground level. So, this goes up five stories, right? So, every story above the ground level is residential. So, we've got 300 and, I'm going to get the number, 78 units in this multi-story building. The, the live-work stuff is just happening at the ground.
Got you, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chairman. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this item? Anybody in opposition? And I'll return it to the commission. Currently, we are on the comprehensive plan amendment portion.
Mr. Chairman, if none of the other commissioners have any comments, I'd like to make a motion for comprehensive plan amendment two oh two five two one eight CP be forwarded to city council for approval based on staff recommendations.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second recommending approval. And the motion passes seven to one. Zoning case 2025 dash two seventeen dash ZC, again located at 1101 West Royal Lane, this is the companion case, and sir, you already spoke. I assume you didn't have anything further. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor or in opposition to this item? No, then I'll close the public hearing and turn it to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, if none of the other commissioners have any comments, I'd like to make a motion for zoning case two oh two five two one seven ZC be forwarded to city council based on staff recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second recommending approval. Please vote. And the motion passes seven to one. Item twenty-two, zoning case 2025 dash two one nine dash ZC located at 4441 and 4435 West John Carpenter Freeway. Is the applicant present?
Thanks for standing.
Yeah. Part of the job. My name's David Gregory, DCG Engineering, 1668 Keller Parkway Suite 100, Keller, Texas, seven six two four eight. We're coming here with a pretty simple application request. Currently, the, the overall property has been developed as a hotel with restaurant and bar. When it was originally site planned, the area in question that's in the, in the red highlighted area on Exhibit B site plan was left as vacant. My client is desiring to develop a church on this property that will hold approximately 300 parishioners. When we first met with city staff, city staff informed us that the site plan had this area shown vacant, so we needed to amend the site plan to allow and show how the church may develop. In developing the site plan, we had found that we needed one variance to allow for some parking spaces to infringe on a 30-foot building setback. Currently, at the worst location, we're encroaching in on that setback about 13 feet, 13 and a half. We're going to infringe on that building setback by approximately 350 square feet, but if you look at our site plan, we have other areas immediately adjacent to those areas where we've pulled back off that area. If you look at where our paving is, we have approximately 4,400 square feet of additional landscaping area adjacent to it. So, we would respectfully request that we be granted a variance to be allowed to put orderly parking and driving aisles in and around this facility to, to help it operate. Currently, with the hotel, there's cross-access easements fully dedicated, cross-parking agreements fully dedicated. So, if there was traffic concerns, people would have the ability and legal rights to go further up the access road or exit out one of the other entries of the hotel to, to better facilitate traffic movements. I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Sure, one of the questions that came up during the work session was, it wasn't clear whether these parking spots that are affected by, that are in the.
The building setback area?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
It's getting a little late.
I understand.
In the setback area, whether you needed those in order to meet the parking requirements.
It depends on how, the church hasn't been designed. So, currently with the city of Irving parking requirements, you have two different parking requirements, whether you have fixed seats or you have flexible seats. If we have fixed seats, we need 86 parking spots. I have 89 proposed. I have five parking spots that are affected. So, I would not be able to meet parking requirements without some relief. If it was flexible seating, so just chairs that could be moved around, the parking requirement actually goes to 56. So, there's a big deviation there. But since the church hasn't been designed architecturally, I'm trying to give the most options possible to my client in the church.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Just one question. Did you say that you all already have an agreement with parking with the Doubletree Hotel?
Yes, ma'am. The Doubletree Hotel owners have been very involved with the whole process. There are currently cross-park and cross-access agreements in place between the both lots. That would be needed, whether the church is being developed or not, because the, the drive aisle closest to us coming off the access road is technically in the church lot.
Any other questions? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this item? Anybody in opposition? Sir?
My name is James, Pastor James Santiago. After I am the one who's trying to, we're trying to build the church, it's called Christ Center Church.
Anybody like to speak in favor of this item?
Oh, no, no, no. In favor, sir.
Yes, okay.
In favor, sorry. Sorry for that. Well, I just want to relate to all of you that we just want to serve the community, and it's our passion to serve the people, and we're leasing a building right now, and we can do a lot of things for, for the people. And that's all we want to ask is give us opportunity because that's all we care about. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anybody who'd like to speak in opposition to this item? No, then I'll close the public hearing and return it to the commission for any discussion and a motion. Commissioner Ahmed?
Mr. Chairman, if there are no further discussions.
Did you want to make comments first?
I'd like to recommend zoning case number 2025 two one nine ZC to the council for approval.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second recommending approval. Please vote. And the motion passes unanimously. All right, on to item twenty-three, ordinance amendment 2025 dash two four five dash UDC. Just do a public hearing? All right, does anybody want to speak in favor and opposition on this item? There's not too many people left. All right, well, there not being anybody who'd like to speak on this item, I will return it to the commission for discussion and a motion.
I would like to call on the fire department to explain the reasoning for my request to go eight, a minimum of eight stories, so he can explain it from a fire and safety standpoint.
Hello, Derek Austin, Fire Marshal. I didn't hear y'all's discussion, so I don't know exactly what y'all's debate was, but when you build something that's currently 75 feet or higher, it's classified as a high-rise building, and at that point, there are a lot of safety features that are, that instantly come online with that type of construction. You're going to have a type-one construction, which is reinforced concrete and protected steel, which means it has like a foam sprayed over it to protect it from direct flame impingement or heat, to stop the metal from melting. Also, you're going to have a fire pump, you're going to have the sprinkler, the fire alarm system, you're going to have voice. system, you're going to have voice evac systems to alarm the, if you're building a high-rise apartment, you're going to have residents. So you're going to have a voice evac system that is verbally telling people to leave the building. You're going to have pressurized stairwells that prevent smoke from entering into the stairwell so that people can evacuate by foot down to the first floor. Those are just some of the most common types of safety features that would be, that would just come online instantly with that height of a building.
Thank you. You said seventy-five feet, so how many, how many floors is that? Is that...
Well, it depends on how, how high, I mean, the first floor could be thirty feet. Depending, it depends on how they design the building. So that's why high-rise is defined by a total number of feet. Right now, in the building code, it's set at seventy-five feet regardless of the number of floors you have. And then currently, the North Central Texas Council of Governments is recommending that all the cities in the metroplex that they, that they influence and recommend code standards to, that they lower the standard to fifty-five feet. And I currently have proposed that in our updated fire ordinance, which hasn't been approved by council yet. It probably won't be approved by council until, I would assume, December.
But if you lower it by fifty-five feet, does that change those standards that you were just telling us?
So everything I was just telling you would come online at fifty-five feet rather than seventy-five.
Then at seventy-five, okay. Thank you.
You. That, that actually kind of is part of why it seems to me that there's a different way of dealing with this issue in terms of maintaining the, the quality of the structure, that if we can change the requirements and require the higher-quality construction at a lower height, that, that would be...
What that does is it changes fire's perspective, fire lowers it down, and a lot of that would be for some of the wood framing. But the International Building Code is what's going to dictate a lot of the structure. So the height for the, when you're building it, building code and building officials will determine, you know, whether it's going to be steel, concrete, et cetera. The fire will trigger a bunch of different things. And that's what they're trying to do, is make sure some of the ones that, that are being built and some of the ones, even if we pass an eight-story and they, they come to us within a site plan, different site plan to lower it, they would still have to comply with certain regulations for the safety of the people living in the building.
Commissioner Ahmed?
I'm just wondering if we stick to the current suggestion of six floors, can we still mandate the type-one construction and some of those other higher-end construction material?
So Senate Bill eight forty's requires that we apply the building code to this as we would any other structure.
Got it.
So we couldn't apply anything greater than what we would if it was an office or something like that?
Thank you.
And what would apply to an office?
Yeah, I mean, granted, an office is, is a, it's a different type of construction, but it just, there's a, if the building code does not allow for the higher level of construction to be imposed, then we couldn't do that.
Great, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Great information, actually, about the fire, on the fire safety side. I don't know if it's staff or maybe you know, how many buildings right now in the city of Irving are meeting that requirement of seventy-five feet or higher?
Oh, I don't know off the top of my head. Several hundred, but I don't know exactly off the top of my head.
Well, I mean residential, residential.
Oh, there are high-rise residential? There aren't very many high-rise residential in Irving. There's the Grand Triviso.
Right, just one that I can think of. I know the Mustang that you also recently built, I think they're up to seven story. So I don't know if they make it to this. That's my understanding, I think they make it to seven story, I think?
Six. They're actually above podium. So the first two, I think it's two, first two floors are parking, and then they have five stories above that. So there's seven stories total, but only five of those are living.
Yeah.
Comment I wanted to make was the fact that living in the Grand Triviso, seventeen stories, but one of the selling points to that is the safety things. Everything you mentioned is built into that, into that building.
Yeah.
We've got the voice activation, unfortunately, someone might pull a fire alarm as a prank and at three o'clock in the morning, please evacuate the building and all that. But with the sprinkler systems and all the safety items that you've talked about, and it is a, it is a selling point for the building. And that is a concern.
Yeah.
Great, great point. When does it trigger a sprinkler system?
When is, when is a sprinkler system required?
Yes.
Well, it depends on what you're using the building for, but for a high-rise, when it comes to a high-rise construction, it doesn't matter if you're using it as an office building or if you're using it for residential or whatever you're using it for. As soon as something is classified as a high-rise, it now has to have a sprinkler system in it.
And that's in part because of the difficulty of getting down that
Right.
taller building. So if you have a shorter building, that's part of the reason that the requirements aren't as strict.
Right.
Because, well, if it's only two or three or four stories, it's much easier to get down and out if there's a fire.
Yeah, that's true.
So how high does the ladder go on a fire truck?
So the highest we can go with our ladder truck is about seventy feet, seventy, seventy-five feet. Because we have, we can't, we can't raise the ladder past a certain degree. We can't go higher than seventy degrees with it. And it's, most of our ladders are a hundred to a hundred and ten feet long, so that allows us to get to about the seventh story of a building.
Thank you.
Further, further comments? Any further comments on it?
Yeah, I think I'm a little bit split on this. I see the, the value and heavy weight on what Commissioner Lightfoot had suggesting, but I'm a bit concerned about the high-rises causing a destructive scenery in the city of Irving, especially when we don't have that right now, high-rises. If they are going to be in, you know, residential neighborhoods and things like that. But I, I see the point and the value in that, so there might be a little bit of a give and take. But that's not something we have right now. We don't have a lot of high-rises in Irving.
I agree with Commissioner Ahmed. I, I get, I, it makes perfect sense to be concerned about the safety, especially as you get higher. But the, the disruption to, to the environment of having a lot of high-rises, so that's what, it seems to me that that, that's something that should be seriously considered when there, there is a way to, to restrict that at least in part.
And I think the city is, correct me if I'm wrong, Jocelyn, but I think there's a way where if they want to amend or do something different other than what the minimum is, they can always come back to us and the City Council and ask for a variance or a different top setup. This is just setting a, a standard that we want to make sure that we got good quality, we're protecting the citizens that are living there, and we're making sure the construction will last a long time and is sustainable.
No, and, and I think that that's really the challenge here is there, there are different things that are both good and important aspects of what we want to do in terms of protecting our community. And, and we're, we're left with a difficult challenge of, of trying to identify how, how best to work within a, a new and relatively unknown legal environment in terms of what we can do to, to best provide for, for the people here. I, I may disagree with you ultimately on how to, how to thread that needle, how to make that call, but, but I understand where you're coming from.
As Mr. Sanders says in the work session, there's, there's really no perfect solution here. The only thing we can do, things will probably change, things will probably get moved around as everything fits in, but for right now, we have to have some sort of solution to move forward.
Yeah.
To protect the citizens and everything else here.
No. And, and I mean, my preference would be something like a forty-five-foot limit, using, using what the, what the statute allows. And, and I, and I understand it doesn't solve, and I would hope that there would be ways to solve the, the concerns you're raising in, in another manner through other portions of the ordinance.
And that might be, when, if fire's able to pass what they want through there, they can work with building inspections, and we might be able to get that same deal and come back and look at it. But for right now, we got to set something in place.
Yeah, I guess, I guess today, there's, there's buildings in Irving today that's forty-five feet. That's not substandard.
Yeah.
So why would we think that if they're following SBA forty, that they're going to build something substandard?
It's not a matter of the building being forty-five feet and being substandard. The building is, a lot of things don't get triggered based upon fire, one, building inspections, to a lot of the buildings that are being built now, well, you take the ones on Lake Carolyn, they're all wood. One of them catches fire.
Yeah.
And it goes, it's done. So you start, you start looking at things like that around a bunch of residential structures, you now have a major problem. If people are building these buildings amongst a bunch of residential structures, then you could potentially have a problem. If we ensure that the quality that is being built, we ensure that the fire safety is there, we ensure the construction is done with either metal or concrete and it's protected, then you might have a fire on a sixth floor, but it's going to be contained.
Yeah, I get that, but if we're not requiring that today...
It's, it's, it is a little bit challenging to understand why all of a sudden this is necessary to require, and it wasn't, it wasn't a year ago.
Yeah. I think one of the thoughts that I'm a little challenged with is eight feet require of type-one construction is more safe. Number one, it's more safe because now it's eight feet, eight, eight-story. But not having those things is not unsafe. Because if it was unsafe, we wouldn't be approving it, right? So, correct my statement if you don't mind, Marshal. Those things that we're talking about, the extra safety features, they're getting triggered because that material can no longer support eight-story building. Or there are certain aspects of it, like Mr. Chairman said, that is harder for a person to come down eight stories, and there's fire sprinklers now. Are those, is that the reason for additional safety requirements because now it's a taller building?
Yeah, so if you build an apartment out of, a four-story apartment made out of wood, then it very well can burn. In fact, we had one apartment complex back in ninety-nine or two thousand. It was right after I hired on, right out there off of Lake Carolyn, that the whole thing burned to the ground while it was being constructed. I mean, I think it was called the Lofts, I think. But yeah, so there's the potential for that there. But the, what he was saying is they only build construction out of wood up to a certain height because it is, it is a greater fire hazard. And so if you only build it to the fourth floor, that's less travel distance for the residents to get down and get out and get, and get to a safe place. But as soon as you start going high, you've got to start taking into other consideration because it's going to take so long for people to get down the stairwell, and you have so many people in the building, the stairwells are going to, it, it's not like people are going to be able to sprint quickly down the stairs. There's going to be, you're going to have people of different age, different health conditions. And so, so pretty much everyone's going to be walking down the stairs. So that's why you have to build a two-hour fire-rated stairwell that's pressurized so that it can't fill with smoke, so that people can get down safely.
They're coming down ten stories or, you know, whatever, yeah. Yeah, or seventeen, yeah.
Are there, so the wood that we use, the lumbar that's used, it also has fire resiliency, correct? It has fire resiliency as well, the wood, the lumbar?
The lumbar, no. It's not fire resistant.
Okay.
No. We have, I mean, it was, what was it, twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen over on Park Ridge, we had a three-story apartment building burn completely to the ground.
No firewall in between the floors or anything?
Not in that type of construction, no. There, there is an inherent fire hazard that comes along with wood frame construction.
This would be the same in a two-story house.
Yeah.
I mean, it's the same thing. It's wood construction, it could all burn. You don't have a, a barrier in between the floors.
Right.
Yeah.
So in your opinion, let me ask you this, if you're building an apartment complex or whatever amongst residential neighborhoods, if you build it out of wood or you build it out of steel and concrete, which one's going to be the safer option for the citizens around them?
Regardless of the height, if it's built out of steel and concrete, it's going to be safer. That would apply to a single-family residential home that's only two stories, too.
Yeah.
So your suggestion of fifty-five feet is for construction to be steel and concrete?
For, that, that's being recommended by the North Central Texas Council of Governments. So when I first hired on here over two decades ago, a high-rise was defined as forty-five feet. And then we changed from the Uniform Building Code to the International Code Council. We changed, and we moved over to a completely different code body, which encompasses the International Fire Code, International Building Code, International Plumbing Code. It's a different group of people who wrote the codes, and they defined a high-rise as seventy-five feet. And since we shifted over into that document, we just went with that height. And a lot, a lot of the whole Dallas-Fort Worth area moved over to the International Code Council, and everybody was enforcing that. But now, the North Central Council, North Central Texas Council of Governments, they're recommending that we go from seventy-five down to fifty-five because the seventy-five foot is now presenting problems. And a lot of it has to do with travel time. It's, they've been doing a lot of research and studies, and they've found that it's, it's taking a long time for people to travel down seven, seven or eight flights of stairs. The, the average US citizen, I don't know how much detail y'all want to get into, but the average US citizen is not in the best of health percentage-wise. And they move, they move slower than they used to, say fifty to seventy years ago. Everybody was healthier a long time ago. Everybody was a lot more active. So what used to work doesn't work anymore. So that's why they're recommending that they lower the, the standards.
I'm having trouble trying to figure out, is seventy-five feet six stories or eight stories? I, I know it depends on the height of your ceiling and so forth, and if you've got a double atrium in the first and second floors, but what is typical?
So what I was calculating, if we're assuming ten-foot floors, which is taller, I know, with two feet in between, because you have to have some type of plate, that's about six and a quarter floors.
Right, six and a quarter floors for how many feet?
Seventy-five.
Okay.
So let me run that if it's a seven...
And seven to five is when it gets triggered, right? The higher quality material gets triggered at seventy-five feet?
Currently.
Now, keep in mind, though, when you get at six stories, you can still use heavy timber. So you can still use a wood type.
At seventy-five?
Yeah, seventy-five feet, you can still use what they consider heavy timber. So when you go above that...
How many feet?
That, that's when it, when you increase it to the eight stories, that's when you're locking it down to steel or concrete as far as the structure. You have the option to use automatic steel, concrete, or heavy timber at six stories. So you can still use wood at six stories.
Commissioner Denny?
Yeah, just offer a few comments on this. I'm, I'm coming out on the side of being open to like, say, the eight-floor standard. Part of the challenge that I see is that we're faced with kind of a one size, one-size-fits-all situation where there could be this mixed use or multifamily in what was never intended to be residential areas. And so that, I think that is steering, like, staff recommendation toward a one-size-fits-all of let's, let's get something that we know is going to be quality, that, that we know there are safety standards associated with it. And if there are going to be exceptions, there's going to be exceptions coming down from that rather than other ways to deal with the development. So I, that's what I see animating some of this discussion, and I'm open to that.
Commissioner Pritchard?
I think one of the reasons we're here tonight is the fact that Bill eight forty, when it goes into effect, our standards that have been set, and that's one of the reasons we're here tonight, to set our standards, we can always adjust them down if we need to, but we're not going to be able to go up above them if eight forty will restrict it. Am I right?
I would say, in a way, what we do know is that projects that were initiated prior to September first are not subject to the preemptions of eight forty. Projects initiated after September first are. And so what we're trying to do is come up with a reasonable set of requirements that can be applicable to anything that comes in the door after September first.
You said it better than I did, that's all.
Yeah, and I, I think, you know, to the, to the point that's being made, there, there really isn't a great, perfect solution here. Yeah, and I, I, I think, you know, to the, to the point that's being made, there, there really isn't a great, perfect solution here to Commissioner Denny's point. What, what we're anticipating is, what we did not anticipate three months ago is that there would be ten thousand additional acres potentially that could be developed for multifamily that aren't entitled today. That's, that's the, I mean, I, I know that's a kind of an extreme what-if, but it's the, it's the scenario we're faced with trying to figure out, okay, how do we respond to that potential? Using a law that really stripped away a lot of the nuance, nuance that planning commissioners and councils would typically look at when you're looking at a project. All that's been kind of taken away, and so what are we left with? And a lot of what we're left with is, okay, we're gonna apply a broad set of standards that we can still use, even though it may be imperfect, and then have the option to look at those as implementation proceeds or as a project comes forward and still be able to come off of that. That's a really long answer to your question, Commissioner. Sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Pritchard, so.
I feel like after, if it's eight stories, that seems, to everybody's point, safer to me. You don't really know how, what your response time is gonna be to fight a fire because you've got a multifamily in an area where you didn't anticipate multifamily. You don't know what your water demand is gonna be for multifamily. So it seems to me eight feet, if you can keep the structure safer for people in the building and around the building, it seems logical to go to the eight stories, not eight feet, sorry, eight stories.
Phil, Commissioner Seguina? Please.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, sir.
So, uh, just to confirm, so this will mean that any multifamily building after September first, like you mentioned, will have to meet at least either six or eight story?
That wasn't previously entitled. Any previous entitlement that was approved prior to September first can live with that entitlement.
Or if it's a conversion property, which we haven't really been talking about.
Conversions have some other, yeah, issues. I mean, a conversion could convert at the stories that they're at.
Okay, perfect. Um, just a comment, if, if one of the concerns is about the amount of maybe multifamily, keep in mind that right now there's just one building in the city of Irving that meets the seventy-five feet story. Uh, feet, seventy-five feet. There are, like Commissioner Apple said, there are several that do meet the forty-five feet. So if that's one of the concerns, that will, I think that will
I think what we're trying to envision is if, if the door becomes wide open and it's open season on new multifamily, what is the best posture for us to take? And I think the question was, we haven't had that rule in place before, why now? Well, why now is because we're looking at basically uncontrolled or the lack of the ability to make decisions on reasonable growth of multifamily. So you, you take the perspective of, okay, if we are going to be, have these projects come up to us without the ability to analyze them from a rational, logical land use perspective, what's the best posture to take? And one of the things is, well, let's make sure that we have a quality, sustainable product that's safe. Those are things we know we can do, and so that's, thus kind of the, one of the reasons for taking the position or the recommendation that we're making.
I'm unclear, um, do these standards, when they get passed by city council later this month, do they go into effect September first or October first?
Sep, well, Carolyn, September first? Immediately upon adoption, so August twenty-eighth.
Well, I, I appreciate everybody's hard work in providing a lot of structure that helps us dictate or guide a better, higher-quality product instead of just open, open range.
I've got one more question.
Yes.
So, so I agree with, you know, it makes sense for, to have these higher standards. But do those higher sta, if, if I'm a developer and I come in and I say I'm only building a four-feet, four-foot building. Four-story building. Does, does, does that apply, those same standards apply? Because like you said, we're getting ready to
Yeah.
open up the floodgates.
The standards
shapes and sizes.
The standards that would be applicable to the project would apply when it comes to building and fire codes, we would apply the standards that are applicable to the type of construction. Which is when you talk about increasing the height of a construction, it kicks it into a, a higher-quality construction. That's the reason for talking about a minimum height requirement is so that higher construction standards would apply.
So multifamily can only be six stories?
That would be the minimum under this proposal.
Okay.
It could, it could be six or higher, or, or the eight depending.
Or, or whatever, whatever the, six would be the minimum, and then you could go higher if the district that you're in allows higher. And that's subjective depending on your location and so forth.
Yeah, I think, uh, the, the key part in all of this is there's no perfect solution. I think in my mind, I was thinking like eight-story buildings in the scenery of Irving, but we're already going to have six stories, so the, the delta is two stories, not necessarily all eight stories. And I think Commissioner Hack actually made a good comment that we don't know about the infrastructure and whether fire and them can support six-story building. I'm sure they will. So I think the wise thing in my head to do is probably err on the safer side versus the scenery of the city. Again, it's, it's not perfect. It's still a concern to me, it's still a challenge in my head, but it seems like we can, we can set higher standards for anybody that's coming in. It sets the right message to developers, that if you really wanna come in and do this, you gotta do it at these higher standards. So, thank you.
All right, any further comments? Commissioner Lightfoot?
And just to be clear, seventy-five feet.
It's six and a quarter stories.
Yeah.
Six and a quarter. It depends, yeah.
Eight.
If there's no further, uh, discussion amongst commissioners, I'd like to move twenty-twenty-five to four-five UDC to pass a motion to move it from six stories to eight stories as our minimum requirement.
So you're, you're moving for approval, recommending approval of the ordinance with the modification
From six to eight.
Of this, rather than six stories minimum and eight stories minimum.
Correct.
I'll second.
City Council.
Don't, don't, we don't wanna talk about feet, ninety-six feet as opposed to stories?
I think the, the reason we put stories in there is because as I understood it, that's when the building code requirements could, would kick in based on a number of stories. Again, the, the fire marshal and the, um, building, the
Fire code.
Building official are more familiar with, you know, the feet and, and how that would apply. I'm, I'm comfortable with stories if we can certainly have a subsequent conversation and if feet makes more sense and it still provides the level of, of assurance regarding quality of construction, we can make that adjustment to the city council. But I'm, I'm not certain enough right now as to putting a footnote number in there. I, I really wanna think through, okay, what does that mean?
Would that be a variable too then, if you do feet?
I, I would say eight occupied stories.
Yeah, they, I, I know that the
Eight occupied stories. So if they wanna make the ceilings twelve feet, they wanna make them eight feet, whatever it is they wanna do, eight occupied stories.
When, when we had this conversation, I was talking through with our building official, and I wish he was here. It was in, in terms of stories and occupied stories particularly, and, and when that higher quality, uh, construction would kick in. So that's the number I'm comfortable with, if, if that can be translated into feet. And there, there's just some things to think through, like when you pull on a thread, I, I gotta see which, which other ones come loose. But I, the, the stories is what we're comfortable with right now in terms of the, the ordinance. Occupied stories, as you said.
Philip, can I, can I jump in here real quick?
Sure.
Obviously, I haven't been a part of the conversations with, that the building official Wayne Snell was in. But the, the building code has two different charts. One is in feet, one is in stories. So they kinda cover both grounds. Typically, uh, Mr. Lightfoot, to your point on the wood frame construction, a sprinkled type-five building, which is wood frame construction, maximum height on that is seventy feet. Maximum number of stories is five. So by making it six, you've done away with the ability for wood frame construction to be used.
But wouldn't you still have the ability to do what they call, uh, heavy, heavy lumber? I mean, that, that still triggers in
Heavy timber.
From six to eight stories.
That's a completely different conversation because the, the viability or feasibility of someone coming in and using heavy timber or mass timber is kind of what it's being referred to now, that has a completely different burning characteristic than your, your wood stud frame. So there's, but yet, there, there, we're getting off into a conversation about construction types because even heavy timber can be protected, kinda like the spray foam that Derek talked about. E, even on a, a heavy timber, uh, construction or mass timber, that can be protected such that with, with non-combustible materials, be it spray, be it sheet rock, whatever. So, but I think to, to, to the points of the, of the six, six stories, I think that, and again, I was not privy to the conversations, but that eliminates the ability for them to use type-five wood frame construction.
And, and because this is a zoning amendment, we're, we're not amending the building code, but we're using what we know about the building code to adapt and establish a height requirement. That, that's how this is related, but we can't, using this ordinance, amend the building code. That's a separate deal and process, so.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Who did the second? Commissioner Ahmed? Anybody wanna make any comments on the motion before we vote? I just have one quick comment on the, the issue of the six foot, or six-story versus eight-story. I don't really have an opinion on it, and I see how that's, that gets into the technical issues in terms of the construction and what's necessary, and I don't really have an opinion about that one way or the other. I don't feel qualified to answer that, that question. I, I understand why, you know, the, the, the importance of having construction, especially if you are gonna have a tall building, uh, that's going to protect people as much as possible. I think that setting a minimum of, of that high a building, however, as, as sort of a, basically a citywide standard is, is, uh, harmful in other ways. And I, I realize as, as has been mentioned numerous times, there's no perfect solution here. There's no perfect way to do this, but we're, we're each called to vote on this separately. And so I will be voting against this. I think that having a height restriction, a maximum height restriction in accordance with the statute would be the better way to go in the short term until something else could be developed further down the line. But, uh, but I, I fully understand why, you know, many of you feel otherwise. All right, anybody else, any comments before we vote?
So can you say that motion again? I'm sorry, can you say the motion again?
I move to approve Ordinance Amendment twenty-twenty-five, tw, two-four-five UDC as written, except for moving it from six to eight stories.
I'll second.
All right, I think we have a motion and a second. Unless there are further comments, please vote. And the motion passes seven to one. All right, and that is it for tonight. It is ten oh nine, the meeting is adjourned.